Thank you. I could everyone stand for the lead, just have me standing for the information. Thank you. That's great. So, as we come to you tonight, we invite the presence here and we are thankful that we have your power and your guidance for us as we seek to make good decisions, uh, for the life of this community. We can help recent, uh, persons, uh, to fight your problems, your doubts. Uh, we just ask that, in your view, you have a sense of your presence, in a sense of your thoughts and your opinion about the fact that we're in a place of agreeance, reality here, security, and, uh, this meeting. One more please. Is it? Yeah. Yeah. Uh. The next part of the meeting is set aside for public discussion and there's been a number of people here when they have the need to want to address themselves at this point, but I'd like to know how many of you there are, if you can get this through there. Uh, yeah. About fifty-five people.
The gentleman that sent the email.
That's me.
You're gonna go first and you have seven minutes because you asked. The rest of you, five, okay? And there's a meter up there with a light and that's, will tell you how much time you have left. Yes?
I'll just do a quick presentation if we can, and, and, I'm not, I, no complaints, not, I just wanna move over to the table.
No, I'm gonna take, what I want are the five people to go over there and stand so we can see you one at a time, and this gentleman will be first and then we'll just go through the line.
Mine remains silent. Mine remains stood. Something's on the agenda.
Then when we get there, I'll get you. Which item is it?
It's a creed on that tone.
Okay. Uh, where's?
He said I have this first.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
This one's five.
Five minutes. I promised not to try, even try to take five. Hi there, my name's Dave Wallace. I am being joined by Andrea Jones, my sister-in-law Mercedes Wallace, my wife Kim, and the chairman of our board, my mother Nan. We represent the DW sixty-one foundation. DW sixty-one stands for my brother, Stanluss County Deputy Sheriff Dennis Wallace, who was tragically killed in the line of duty two and a half years ago. How small our world is. On our way here, I was talking with my wife and somebody else near and dear to our hearts here in Ripon is Bob Winget. Bob was formerly a Stanluss County Deputy Sheriff that I served with and my brother Dennis also. He was a mentor to Dennis and they were so close that actually Dennis did Bob's eulogy at Bob's funeral when he was killed in the line of duty. Why we're here. After Dennis died, a couple ladies on our committee, um, said, you know what? This can't be the end of the story. And if you knew Dennis, you knew how much he loved kids, how much he loved youth programs, how much he was involved in the youth programs. That's where he and Bob worked together. They were both dare officers together for almost ten years. We formed a golf tournament. It's the Dennis Wallace Memorial Golf Tournament. We are blessed that we're going to have our third tournament August nineteenth at Oakdale Golf and Country Club. From that tournament, all the proceeds, we have turned around and given to youth programs in the greater Stanluss area. And that's why we're here today. We have been fortunate that we have given away now over fifty-five thousand dollars to youth programs and, uh, yeah, thank you. That's awesome. Um, all, all in memory of Dennis and, uh, just trying to spread his love for youth. It's our honor and our pleasure today to be here to give a five hundred dollar donation to the Ripon Police Explorer Post in, in memory of Dennis. So, that's why we're here. I got two hundred, or two and, two minutes and forty-three seconds.
Thank you.
So, if we could take a photo, chief, um, and, and, we'd love to, with explorers, we'd love to take a photo if you don't mind, and then we'll get out of your hair.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll take, hopefully, just a minute of the remaining time to thank the foundation for the donation on behalf of the explorers. We have a couple explorers here with us, an explorer advisor and the chief, and we'll take a quick photo.
Sit here, mama.
Nah.
Can I ask a quick question before we start? Um, I'm a little nervous, so, um, I may stutter a little bit. I, I'm right about seven and a half minutes, or can we be okay with a little? I'll try to talk fast.
If I start moving in your direction, you'll know you're getting in trouble.
Well, the cops just left, so it'll take them a little while to get over here. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Joe Cock, I'm a Christian, husband, father, and I've been a member of the Ripon community for about four years now. First, I want to say that I respect the laws of this chamber, the laws of the city of Ripon, San Joaquin County, state of California, the United States government, the US Constitution, and mostly the laws handed down to us by God. It's an honor and privilege to be able to speak to you here today, and I want to thank those who have come here to support us in this endeavor. I'm not a pastor, a poet, or a politician, I just want to talk about something that's the utmost importance to me and to a great many of us in this community. The unchecked killing of human beings, it's happening around us every day and even likely happening in this city. I'm talking about abortion, which according to the World Health Organization, takes the lives of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand children every single day. A hundred and twenty-five thousand children every single day. That's enough to repopulate the United States in six years. Five million every year. Abortion doesn't only happen at places like Planned Parenthood, it's happening at your family's doc, family doctor's office, local hospitals and medical clinics. And if they get their way soon, you'll be able to have them at home without a doctor present. That legislation is already pending in some states. Some will argue it's just a fetus, a clump of cells. By that argument, we're all just a clump of cells. Some of our, some are just more sophisticated than others. Science is very clear on when life begins, and regardless of this particular argument, science overwhelmingly agrees that life begins at conception. At the mode of conception, a baby is assigned all the unique characteristics of a human: DNA, hair color, eye color, and amongst others, the likelihood of male pattern baldness. At three weeks, the heart is pumping blood and all the vital organs have begun to form. At six weeks, a heartbeat can usually be detected. Legal to kill here in Ripon. At seven weeks, the baby is fully formed: arms, legs, hands, feet, finger and toes. Still legal to kill here in Ripon. At week nine, organs are fully functioning and through ultrasound, you'll be able to determine the baby's gender. Still legal to kill here in Ripon. At twenty-four weeks, your baby is fully formed with all its features, and is typically about twelve inches long. Sadly, still be able to ki, legal to kill here in Ripon. So, if science has settled on when life begins, then it should be clearly defined that a fertilized egg is life and it should be protected just like any other human life is. But yet we somehow have grown calloused to what is actually happening here. Please take the words of former abortionist Dr. Tony Levitino. Imagine for a moment that you're a pro-choice OBGYN, as I was. Your patient, today is seventeen years old and she's twenty weeks pregnant. At twenty weeks, her uterus is up to her umbilicus and she has been feeling her baby kick for the last two weeks. If you could see her baby, she would be as long as your hand from the top of her head to the bottom of her rump, not counting her legs. Your patient is now asleep on an operating room table with her legs in stirrups. Upon entering the room after scrubbing you dry your hands with a, with a sterile towel. The first task is to remove the lamin area that has earlier been placed on the cervix to dilate it for the procedure. With that accomplished, your direct attention to the surgical, will be to the surgical instruments arranged at a small table to your right. The first instrument you reach for is a fourteen French, fourteen French suction catheter. It's a clear plastic tube about nine inches long and has a bore through the center of about three quarters of an inch in diameter. Picture yourself introducing the catheter through the cervix and instructing circulating nurse to turn on the suction machine. What you'll see is a pale yellow fluid that looks a lot like urine come through the catheter and onto a glass bottle into the suction machine. This is the amniotic fluid that surrounded the baby and was to protect her. With suction complete, you look for your sofer clamp. This is an instrument about thirteen inches long made of stainless steel. At the end are located jaws about two and a half inches long and three quarters of an inch wide with rows of sharp teeth. That, that instrument is for grasping and crushing tissue. When it gets a hold of something, it does not let go. A second trimester D and E abortion is a blind procedure. The baby can have, be in any position inside the uterus. Picture yourself reaching in with the sofer clamp and grasping anything you can. At twenty weeks gestation, the uterus is thin and soft, so be careful not to perforate the walls. Once you have grasped something inside, squeeze your clamp and set the jars and pull hard, really hard. You feel something let go and out pops a fully formed leg about four or five inches long. Reach in and grasp whatever you can. Set the jaw really hard and once again, it pops out an arm about the same length. Reach in again and again and again with the clamp and tear out the spine, intestine, heart and lungs. The toughest part of a D and E abortion abstraction is the baby's head. The head of the baby that ages about the size of a plum is now free floating inside the uterine cavity. You can be pretty sure you have a hold of it with the sofer clamp is spread about as far as your fingers will allow. You will know you have it right when you crush down the clamp and see a pure white gelatinous material issue from the cervix. That was the baby's brains. Congratulations on the sexually performed D and E abortion. You affirmed her right to choose and you just made five hundred dollars cash in fifteen We're at a crossroads here in this community, in this country, as some of you may have seen. Some states are rushing to protect this heinous act, up to and even after birth, while some states are jumping on the right side of history and protecting life as we should be. This, this brings me to why I'm here today in front of you. The city of Ripon, the council and its residents have shown a strong support for life and a strong support for good values, morals, and our God-given right to life. What I'm asking, what I'm asking from you today is just, is something similar to what you've already done. I'm asking you to make the city of Ripon a sanctuary to all life. Those outside the womb and especially those inside the womb who need our protections the most. Please show the world who we are and what we stand for. Thank you and God bless the city council and God bless the great citizens of Ripon. Please go to andabortionnow.com for more information. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a nervous speaker, so I'm gonna be really quick, just short and sweet. My name is Sarah Coronado and I've been a resident of Ripon for about three years now. I'm a mother of six and we moved to Ripon because it is a safe and great community to raise a family. In our city statement, we state that Ripon is a place that prides itself on traditional values and is a great place to raise a family. So, what better way to show that we do believe and live out our statement of priding ourselves on traditional values than by making our city a sanctuary city and protecting the most innocent, the unborn in the womb? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Justin Bachman. I am the mid-state regional compliance manager for the Construction Industry Force Account Council. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring state and local governments' compliance with the public contract code here in California. Currently, the city of Ripon is a general law city with a bid threshold of five thousand dollars on public works projects. This means that all public work projects valued more than five thousand must be competitively, competitively bid and awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, and responsible bidder. This bid threshold does not give the city much leeway to self-perform or execute simplified contracts on small projects. However, the city does have an option to increase this threshold and give itself more leniency in regards to utilizing force account or speeding up the process to contract for public projects. By opting into the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, we'll call that the Act, administered by the state comptroller's office, the city will be able to self-perform or non-competitively bid projects under sixty thousand and will be able to informally bid projects up to two hundred thousand. This greatly reduces the time, effort and expense associated with bidding projects. There's no cost associated with becoming, coming a participate, participating agency to the Act. Additionally, there are one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine public agencies who have already opted into the Act and are benef, benefiting from the simplified bidding process. An FAQ document outlining areas of concern and explanations of benefits is available on the state comptroller's website. I'm here to recommend that the city of Ripon submits a resolution to the state comptroller's office to become a participant of the Act. I'm happy to assist the city with any questions you may have pertaining to this matter. Thank you.
Anybody else? I think that was it. All right, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. There are three sets of minutes, June eleventh, June twelfth and June nineteenth.
Second.
All right, next item, approval of the agenda as posted. Anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar?
I want to pull one point three A, please.
And I want to pull one point four A.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to pull item four A and we need to shift that actually to the August meeting.
Item four A? Anything else? Can we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Does that move?
Second.
Next item is the consent calendar. Need a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So, I'll second that.
All right, and then the pulled items, Mr. Restuccia, item one point three A.
Yeah, I'm looking for it. So, this is for the records clerk. So, the question I have, Chief, thank, I want to thank you for doing that because I think it's long overdue. Is this the result of the report that we got or part of a result of the, of the, can I say grand jury?
No, the, uh, Councilman Restuccia, this is not a result of the, any grand jury reports. This is something that the department has been struggling with for some period of time. We had a records clerk position up until two thousand and nine, uh, and right before the Great Recession, that position was laid off. And, um, up until, uh, last council meeting, that posi, that workload has been transferred to multiple divisions within our department and multiple employees. So, we're trying to consolidate it because the laws that have recently been passed in the state of California and the demand of the workload, uh, it needs to be centered to one individual employee rather than multiple divisions.
Well, I, uh, thanks for doing it because I think it's long overdue.
Thank you.
My question for one point four A, this is the sidewalk maintenance contracts. I just want to make sure I understand how this is gonna work because under the law, it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain the sidewalks, correct?
That's correct.
So, under this program, a property owner who's notified they have a problem to correct could work through this contractor to get the work done? Or they can hire their own, but they could use this person?
Correct. That's how the ordinance is written.
And then should a person not get the job done, I think the ordinance says ninety days, this contractor could be sent in to do the work?
Correct.
And then that would be sent to the property owner either as a bill or eventually could be a lien against property?
Right, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on. All right, we need a motion to approve items one point three A and one point four A.
Second.
Okay. I'm getting there. Uh, item two, resolutions. Resolution of the city, uh, council is designating a voting delegate and alternate delegate to the League of Cities Annual Conference. Who's going?
Not me. Not me.
I would, Dean's going.
All right. I might, but I still have one issue that I gotta check to make sure, so.
We're not gonna send the ultimate?
Well, it might be me if I, okay? So, we would need a motion to designate Councilman Uker as the voting delegate, and assuming I make it, I would be designated as the ultimate.
Second.
Well, I better. Actually, I better learn something.
Yeah, learn something.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
All right, uh, next item, public hearings. The first is the, uh, annual assessment for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty for the Ripon lighting district. Who's handling this?
I can handle it, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual process that we go through. Uh, this is, and as part of that process, we have a public hearing that sets the amount of the lighting district annual assessment.
So, I open the public hearing and you'll tell everybody how much they're gonna pay?
Sure.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Go ahead.
An amount that, uh, every house pays is forty, they call it a single-family equivalent, but every resident pays forty-two dollars a year.
And that's for all the streetlights?
Just for all the streetlights, yes. Yeah, and it's, there's a different formula depending on the businesses, there's a different calculation, but at least for a residential house, it's forty-two dollars.
And at this point, the forty-two dollars doesn't cover all the costs, correct?
Yeah, we, we have, uh, we've had deficits, staff, uh, we were just looking at it earlier today. We're bringing back the resolution to talk about, um, the transfer to make up that deficit at the August meeting.
Okay, and part of that deficit is because, if I remember it, we incurred a debt.
We did. Uh, the city went out and, uh, took out debt to install induction lighting. We pay about, uh, forty thousand dollars a year for that debt, and I think for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, the actual deficit, uh, in the lighting district was on the order of fifty thousand dollars.
So, essentially, when that debt is paid off, we'll be at about a break-even point?
Right.
Okay.
Be close.
Anyone from the public wish to comment? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for consideration from the council. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Item three A, well, we just did that, three B, is the same, uh, public hearing for assessments for the landscape maintenance districts we have in town, correct?
Yes.
And there are what, ten?
Yes.
All right, you want to give us a summary and then we'll open the public hearing?
Yeah, the, a lot of these, um, they vary of how long they've been in existence. Some are very old, some have been recent, recently established. Uh, the older ones do not include any sort of escalation along with, uh, those assessments and, uh, but obviously, the, um, the labor that goes in to take care of them has escalated. but obviously, the labor that goes in to take care of them has escalated, so many of those are in deficit positions. Some of the newer ones are doing much better. There's actually two of the maintenance districts that the city council, for the last few years, I would recall, that we've actually lowered the assessment below what the council has the ability to assess. So, tonight is the public hearing to set the assessment for fiscal year nineteen twenty.
We'll open the public hearing. Any comment, questions, input from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I have some questions.
So do I. We'll let you go first.
So, first of all, all of our notes aren't coming over back on this because I had a bunch of notes written on the side, and I don't see them. So, now I'm going to have to go by memory. I don't know what happened. So, Kevin, for an example, on Bosch Kingery, we have a hundred and five parcels and a hundred and three are levied assessments. Is that because the city owns two of them?
I would guess.
There's a couple of those, and I had my notes, but the notes are gone, so I don't.
It could be. It could be that the, or even if it's not the city, it could be a governmental agency that.
Okay, the other question I have, I noticed that some of these kind of stay stagnant in terms of balances, and I, again, I don't have my notes, but there was one that looks like we're depleting the balance, which is right, by about seven thousand dollars a year because it looked like there was, there's too much in reserves because part of this takes reserves. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's a good point. When we went through the budget process this last year, the direction that staff got from the city council, in the past, what we used to do is if there was an annual deficit, staff would bring forward a resolution that would transfer general fund money to the lighting district that had the annual deficit. In many of the cases, these maintenance districts had balances, so we were just saving the balances, and I think the direction we got during the budget process is no longer do that. Don't make the transfers until the balances get to zero. So, that's what we were talking about earlier today on those. So, you'll see a little bit more of that next month.
Okay, because some look like they're kind of breaking even at the end, but one's kind of depleting quite a bit.
Right.
Properly, because there's way too much money in there.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But I can't tell which one it is.
That was going to be my question, too, because I thought we had talked about if there was a balance, use it, and then if it gets to zero, then we'll cover the difference.
Yeah, so tonight is just the assessments, and you're right, we still show it the old way of how we've done them in the past, but this is really just setting the assessments. When we come back in August, we'll have the resolution that shows the transfers, and then we have a summary of each of the districts. Revenue, expenses, transfers, and balances, so you'll see it all in one place next month.
Okay. So, do we need to adopt the resolution tonight?
No, tonight is just the.
Public hearing?
The public hearing, and then also the action, executing the documents necessary to forward to the county assessor's office.
Okay, so this will come back next month for action as a resolution?
This will not. This is for the assessments, but what will come back next month is the transfers that we're going to need to, related to the annual deficits for each of the districts.
So, then we need to adopt this resolution?
Oh, yeah, sorry, for this one.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Item four A was pulled, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, item four B, first reading and adoption of an ordinance, I love this, setting a tax rate which we don't have to have and telling the public that it's going to be zero.
Now, if only the state would learn.
One of the really neat things your state has done for you. So, do we have, we need to adopt.
I'll move.
Accept the first reading and adopt the ordinance, correct? Okay.
So, that's my motion.
And I'll happily second that.
Four C. This is an ordinance, and I want to take a minute to kind of explain it because the way it was in the paper today was a little bit bent. We have had several commissions in the community. There was one, a senior commission, historical commission, the community youth commission, and the recreation commission. And what happens is there are groups in the community that do the same thing as the commission, and it's usually the same people. And so, they're subject to all these city rec, rules and regulations, which we're told we have to do by state law, that really doesn't help at all in allowing them to do their job. And so, a few years ago, the city, as an experiment, eliminated the senior commission and let a voluntary group of people called the senior center, friends of the senior center, assume those responsibilities. They signed an agreement with the city as to who would do what with the senior center, and it's been working fine. So, at this point, this community youth commission is having a heck of a time keeping membership and all these requirements, and the historical society and the historical commission are the same thing, and they're subject to all these regulations because they're the commission, and they can do just as good a job with a lot less government oversight as the historical society. So, I've talked to the people on both of those, and what this ordinance is going to do is take the city part away so that they're not subject to all those rules about minutes and how many people you have to have and how long the meeting has to be and all that sort of thing, and they can just do their job. The historical society will sign an agreement with the city covering the museum as to who's going to be responsible for what, and everything will continue along just as it has, but without a lot of rigmarole that the city keeps trying to impose on them because they have to. So, that's what it's for. It's really to clean up a problem that we've had for years and allow people in this community to do the excellent job that they do without government getting in their way, so to speak. How'd I do?
Excellent. Couldn't have said it better myself.
So, at this point, we would like to waive the first reading and adopt the ordinance, and basically, all it does is take the community youth commission title out of the ordinance, takes the historical commission out of the ordinance, and we continue on. Do I have a motion?
I just have a quick comment, actually. So, as these come up for yearly, people volunteer form on a yearly basis, this is a great opportunity for you guys to get involved in your communities, especially if you're looking for different opportunities, to kind of reach out and give back to your community, especially as we're seeing the social fabric of America deteriorating day by day with, all you have to do is just go onto Twitter, and you'll see people yelling at one another. This is a great way to interact with your fellow citizens and your neighbors and really get a sense of Ripon. I know we've got people here from the historical society and different commissions, so I would encourage each and every single one of you to look at getting involved in these types of organizations, getting involved in youth sports, getting involved in something that gives back to the community. So, that's just my two cents on this matter.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got it?
That motion was to waive the first reading and introduce that ordinance, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item five, this is probably what most of you are here for. Is Mr. George here? You're on.
All right. It's going to look a lot better. Good evening, Mayor Zuber and members of the council. My name is Dylan George, Public Affairs Representative for PG&E, here today to talk to you about our Community Wildfire Safety Program. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes of your time here today to discuss this important matter with you. I have a presentation, be happy to take questions along the way or wait till the end, whatever you prefer to do. So, PG&E's Community Wildfire Safety Program has three pillars to it, as you see on your screen. The first pillar is real-time monitoring and intelligence. What this consists of is we have set up a wildfire safety operations center. It is staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week during the high fire threat season. We have an ever-expanding network of weather stations and high-definition cameras. PG&E has its own internal meteorology department where we are constantly monitoring conditions in the field and feeding this information back into the wildfire safety operations center where this threat is monitored and decisions can be made with all of this information gathered. So, the second pillar is new and enhanced safety measures. And what this comes down to is several things. One is increased focus on vegetation management. This is tree trimming, tree removal in the high wildfire threat areas of the state. It's also accelerated safety inspections. We have stepped up our game in terms of inspecting overhead power lines, particularly in the high fire threat areas. All of the lines have been newly inspected this spring, heading into the wildfire season. When equipment on these lines was found to be in need of replacement or modernization, that work has, either has already happened or is in the process of happening and is going to be complete before we get into the real heart of the wildfire season. Third part of the new and enhanced safety measures is the potential for proactively turning off power for public safety, and this is what I will spend the majority of the presentation on because I realize this is probably the, this is the part of the program that does have the potential to affect a community like Ripon, and so the, I realize it's probably the part that you guys will have the most discussion on. Third pillar of our Community Wildfire Safety Program is system hardening and resiliency. And what this is, is PG&E has seventy-one hundred miles of overhead power lines in high wildfire threat areas of our state. So, all seventy-one hundred miles of that overhead line is going to get some kind of prescription for system hardening over the next, say, ten years or so. A lot of this work is being done in earnest right now, but some of it is going to take a little longer to do. What this is going to look like in a lot of cases is replacing wooden poles with steel poles or composite material poles, something that's a little hardier, would be better able to withstand things like high winds, things like trees falling into them, things that happen in some of the more remote parts of the state. A lot of times, it's also going to mean replacing the overhead wires, the overhead conductors, with a stronger, thicker-coated wire that we call tree wire. Again, something that has a better chance of, if a tree were to fall into it, and we have these, these high-wind-driven events that we get at times in the Sierras, hopefully it would have a better chance of staying sturdy and not dropping and causing a spark. So, those are the three pillars. Again, I meant, oh, so, let's talk about this a little more. So, on the screen, you see the wildfire safety operations center. It's a picture of it running in real time. This is where all the information comes in from the field. We are, we have several hundred weather stations out there installed. We're installing them literally every day throughout the higher wildfire danger areas of the state. I have a map later on that's going to explain that a little better. I keep using that phrase. We share this data publicly. You can see the website on the screen there where we share it. We also use a lot of other weather station data that other people provide, people like the National Weather Service, other meteorology groups. We're also deploying a lot of high-definition cameras in these wildfire danger areas. We plan to have six hundred of them by two thousand twenty-two. There are dozens of them right now and more of them being deployed every day. PG&E works with a group called AlertWildfire.org. It's a program that's run out of the University of Nevada Reno. They help spot locations where these, these cameras would be good. They work with other community groups that want to volunteer their property to host cameras, want to post their own cameras. And if you go on this website, AlertWildfire.org, I'd recommend it if you're interested in this, you can take a look at these cameras in real time, and it's a great tool in terms of fire prevention, but also a great tool in terms of being able to spot a fire start right at the very beginning. And oftentimes, if you can, can see it on one of these cameras, you can get resources deployed to that fire right away and keep a small fire from becoming a big fire. So, as I mentioned, most of my presentation will focus on the public safety power shut-off aspect. So, to, to discuss the program a little bit, PG&E last year, for the first time, instituted this public safety power shut-off program where we would consider shutting off power if conditions warranted in these high fire threat areas. This year, we've expanded the program a little bit further. Last year, it was only to be done in tier-three areas, which, again, there will be a map that will explain that a little better. This year, we've expanded that to the tier-three, which is the extreme fire threat areas, into also considering the possibility of turning off power in tier-two areas if conditions warrant. And we've also expanded from, last year, we only considered distribution-level power lines. This year, we're considering transmission-level power lines as well. So, that, that's why the expansion of the program, and that's why there's more potential for more communities to be impacted by it. So, if you look on the screen there, it talks a little bit about what some of these conditions are that would lead to an event like this needing to happen. So, the first thing is a red flag warning declared by the National Weather Service. The National Weather Service is constantly putting out forecasts many days ahead, and they will forecast conditions that look like they're severe wildfire risks, and they will call those red flag warning days. When we see a red flag warning day on the horizon in part of our service territory, that's PG&E's first kind of indication to get our emergency apparatus activated, start monitoring for the potential that one of these events might need to happen. And then some of these other factors that you see, low humidity levels, forecasted high winds, sustained winds, and also high gusts of winds. Wind is a big factor in driving a lot of the major wildfire threat that we see, and also driving fires, again, the smaller fires to become bigger fires if they're these large wind-driven events, and then drive fuel conditions on the ground. So, if you, you look at all of these factors, they add up to conditions that we're more likely to see as we get later into the fire season, particularly maybe as we get toward the fall months. We don't tend to see in this area a lot of really high winds in the real heat of the summer. That's something that tends to happen as we get a little later into the season, and the same is true of humidity levels. Humidity levels will really drop when we get into the fall months or the late summer months. Fuel conditions will just basically continue to dry out. We had a very wet winter this year, so we have a lot of fuel loading on the ground. So, as we get further and further into the summer, that, that, those, that small brush and leaves and pine needles and all that is going to continue to get drier and drier. But one of the real keys to this is when do we get our first rain to kind of declare an end to the fire season? You know, last year, we had a very extreme kind of circumstance where we didn't get our first major rain event until the day before Thanksgiving. If we go that long without having rain, these fuels are going to continue to get drier and drier. We're going to continue to have days where we have high winds and low humidity, and that's just going to lead to our state experiencing a lot of fire danger. So, if you want to, to look to an indicator of, you know, how these, how likely these events are to happen, some of that is going to depend on when we get that first rain. So, any questions on this? All right, this is the map that I mentioned. This is, the California Public Utilities Commission, in conjunction with CAL FIRE, has mapped the whole state in terms of fire danger. The white portion of the map, which you can see spans the entire Central Valley, is tier-one, low-fire-risk areas. That's the best place to be, so we in the Central Valley are tier-one, low risk. As you get into the yellow portions of the map, those are tier-two communities. What those mostly are, to relate it to an example near us, those are mostly lower-elevation foothill-type communities like, say, Sonora or Angels Camp or Jackson. Communities like that tend to be in the tier-two area. Tier-three is extreme fire danger. That's kind of the real backbone of the Sierras where you get some real heavily wooded areas, areas like Arnold, Mewoc Village, Twain Heart, Pine Grove, Pioneer, to use some local examples to give some color on that. So, us in the Central Valley being a tier-one community, why would we have to worry about this? So, this is why, because of the interconnected nature of the grid. So, again, as I mentioned, we've expanded the potential to shut off power to now include the possibility of shutting off transmission-level power if that has to happen, if the conditions warrant in an event like that. So, if we have to shut off transmission lines that are high voltage and span a long distance, that might affect communities that are even outside of the tier-three and tier-two areas. There may be possibilities where some of those transmission lines feed into areas of our communities that could be affected, especially in a case where we would have to take down several of those transmission lines and several of the higher-voltage lines. So, it's something that, as the season plays out, you know, we're going to see if we wind up having these conditions that warrant taking down transmission, and it's going to be all of those factors that I mentioned before that drive these public safety power shut-off events. So, questions on that?
Do you want to have a question? So, when I'm looking at this, if your power generation is way up north, no matter where you cut it off, everybody loses.
This map is for illustration purposes only. Don't take this as an actual layout of the grid.
You have other power generation sources throughout that entire.
Yeah, right, throughout our whole, our whole system will have generation sources. We'll have a lot of them in the mountains because we have a lot of hydroelectric generating facilities, so there is quite a bit of generation that happens there. We also have generation, you know, all throughout, through, throughout the Central Valley into the Bay Region. Don't, don't take this map too literally. It's just meant to be kind of an illustration of how the grid works, basically traveling from, you start with generation, and then you travel through transmission lines that are very high voltage, sometimes span a really long distance, move a lot of power a long way. way. And then those transmission lines will feed into substations, which then step the power down to a lower voltage that's safe to carry through a neighborhood. And that's what will deliver to your meter, to your residents, to your businesses. So that's just basically a thumbnail sketch of, of how the grid works and how it's all So this is our goal in terms of notifications when we have to call a public safety power shut-off event. So our goal is to provide 48 hours of notice to our customers before the electricity is turned off. It's not always possible for us to get to that full 48 hours. Sometimes the weather conditions change and come upon us quicker than we anticipate. So we, in every case that we've done so far, I should, I should have mentioned at the top, we, again, we instituted this program last year and there was one shutdown event last year. It was last October. It affected portions of Calaveras, Amador, El Dorado County locally, also affected some portions of the North Bay. In that case, the, the power shutdown lasted as much as three days in some places. Earlier this year, the weekend of June 8th, we had another shutdown event. It was our first one this year. It affected again, portions of the North Bay and then affected portions of Yuba and Butte County in Northern California. In that event, all power was restored within about 16 hours. So there was a lot of progress made from last year to this year in terms of being able to get that back up and running. So just a digression back to the timing of the notification. So in every event that we've had, we've been able to provide at least 24, 36 hours of notification to our customers. Our goal is to get that 48 hours of notification and then to send out an additional notification at 24 hours before the power is turned off to let folks know that the conditions are still trending to what looks like we may need to turn the power off. And then we will let folks know just before the electricity is turned off that this is actually going to happen. We also would like to update our customers during the public safety power shut-off. A lot of times what we would like to send out to them is like when we get the weather all clear, when the red flag conditions have passed and tell them that we're going to go out and start patrolling and start repairing and start getting these lines back up and running, just to keep them posted on the progress. And then we're also going to inform our customers once the power has been restored. In some cases, if a customer's at home, they'll know probably that the power's been restored. But for those that may be left and went to stay with family or friends or something like that, that we want to be able to give them that notice that power's been restored. We'll also work, that, that, those are all notifications in terms of customer notification. We'll also work separately to notify cities, counties, emergency responding agencies, police, fire. We have folks within our organization that are dedicated to, to make those notifications, hopefully before we start even notifying customers so that city, cities and counties can get their emergency teams up and running and be able to be as prepared for they can as, be as prepared as they can for the event to come along. So questions on that?
Dylan, so this is just if you guys are actually going to do it. So there's nothing going to be preceding it saying, hey, it's, it's a high risk area. We might have to do it. Right? This is just if you guys are going to actually do it.
So that's a good question. So at the 48 hour mark, we will usually notify a broader area than will ultimately get shut down. That's the way it's gone in the two events that we've had so far. So we will start with kind of a wider swath of people. We will let them know that there is potential for the event to happen. And then as the weather conditions become clearer and clearer as we get closer to the event itself, a lot of times that pocket of people that, that need to be affected will shrink. And so then we will notify customers if they're not going to be affected or if, if it looks like they are still going to be affected. So if you get that 48 hour notice, it's not necessarily a guarantee that it's going to happen. We always try as, as we get a better and better read on the weather, as we get closer to, to narrow down the affected area as much as we possibly can. So in the event of June 8th, there was quite a bit more customers got the initial notification than were actually shut down by the time the, the weather actually came upon us. So that's why we want to do the multiple notifications because we want people to know, you know, are you still in the affected area or are you not? Have we been able to narrow it down a little further?
Thank you.
So this is a graphic as to what it takes to restore the power in an event like this. So the first thing that we have are the weather conditions. So we are kind of, you know, beholden to what the weather conditions are. So once we have that red flag declaration, we need to wait for the weather all clear. We need to wait for the winds to die down, hopefully the humidity to come back up and the immediate fire danger to subside. Once we get that weather all clear, that gives us the chance to go and, and start restoring the power. So what we're going to do is we will stage crews nearby the lines that are shut down while the lights are off. So they'll be standing by and they'll be ready once they get the go-ahead to start inspecting. We will need to patrol and inspect all of our lines before we can re-energize them. Every line that has been shut down is going to have to get fully patrolled and inspected. When you shut down an entire line or an entire segment of the grid, you take away a lot of the eyes and ears of the grid that normally work under normal conditions. So there's devices out there right now that are operating that would, would sense fault on the grid and stuff and would be designed to, to trip out, to keep things safe if something were to go wrong. If you take those devices out of service by taking the whole grid out of service, you really need to make sure you look at every single bit of it before you're able to re-energize it. We also go through a process we call step restoration. So we will start inspecting lines and once they're deemed clear, we will re-energize those lines, even if we haven't inspected the rest of the affected area. So we will try to go through a step-by-step process where we'll get as many people up and running as early on in the event as we can. So we, for areas like, like here that are tier one areas, the only chance that they would be affected is by a transmission level shutdown. So the good news on that is transmission lines would have to be restored before the distribution network could be restored. That's just the, the nature of how the grid works. So we're going to prioritize going out and patrolling and inspecting those transmission lines and getting them up and running as soon as we possibly can. Of course, when we go out and patrol and inspect, we oftentimes find damage and that damage needs to be isolated, needs to be repaired. So that would need to happen obviously before anything could be re-energized. We will have materials standing by in an area where we call one of these events. So we won't have to go far to get replacement poles, replacement overhead conductors, transformers, crossarms, all of the, the materials that are needed for the grid. So as we go and isolate and repair the damage and patrol lines and deem them good to go, we will start bringing customers back up little by little, step by step. And then we want to again, notify the customers once the, their power is back on. So this is a slide that talks about all the things that we're doing or many of the things that we're doing to work with our customers to, to be informed and prepared on this. I won't go over all of this. There's a lot there, but a couple of things I do want to highlight. One is we have sent letters to all of our electric customers. Probably many of you in the room have gotten the letters if you're a PGE electric customer. We're also mailing postcards to customers that don't have current contact information on file with us. One of the most important things that I always stress when I have the opportunity to, to talk about this program is we need our customers to make sure their contact information with PGE is up to date because our ability to contact our customers is only as good as the contact information they have given us. So a lot of times if somebody has signed up for an account 20 years ago and they had a landline phone number that was hooked up at the time, that landline phone number might not even exist anymore. So we want customers, if they're willing to share cell phone numbers, we will send out automated text messages, we'll do automated phone calls, we will send emails. There's also a way on the website to indicate your contact preference. So if you prefer to be contacted by text message, let us know that. We're going to do everything we can to inform our customers both directly and also we will do extensive media outreach. We'll use social media, any way that we can to let folks know that this is coming. I also wanted to talk about a broad public safety advertising campaign. Some of you may have heard some commercials that, that are produced by PGE in conjunction with the Public Utilities Commission and the other two investor-owned utilities, San Diego Gas and Electric and Southern California Edison. They've launched a website called PrepareForPowerDown.com that I would encourage everybody to check out. They have a lot of tips on there about emergency preparedness, about what you need to have in your emergency plan, your emergency kit, what you need to discuss with your family to be prepared for, you know, not just a, a public safety power shut-off event, but you know, last weekend we had a couple earthquakes in the state. So I think that brought emergency preparedness to the top of a lot of people's minds, which is a good thing because it's always good to have this emergency plan and be ready. There's a lot of resources out there. We've launched radio ads that talk about this Prepare For Power Down website, direct people there to be able to give them some resources to make their plan. We also have plans for more advertising as we go further along. We have held or are in the process of holding 23 answer centers and open houses throughout mostly the high wildfire threat areas of the state. And then we're also really focusing on, on doing things like this, going out and talking to our city councils, county boards of supervisors. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I also want to emphasize our medical baseline program. So PGE has a program called Medical Baseline where customers, if they have life safety needs that require electricity, can get a discount on their rates. If their doctor signs off on the fact that they have a need for say, an oxygen machine or a CPAP machine for sleep apnea or something along those lines, they can sign up for this medical baseline program and get a discount on their rates. That also gives us a good list of people that we know are medically vulnerable in an event like this. So we do extra outreach to those folks. We will make live calls to all of them. And for the ones that we don't actually reach through the live call, we go out and knock on all their doors. So in the event, a couple of weekends ago, or I guess it's, it's a month ago by now, the June 8th event, we were able to reach I think over 90% of these medical baseline customers that were in the affected area. So we want to go out, we're also doing outreach to them now before we get into actual events to really emphasize their need to, to have a plan and be prepared. But we'll do these extra bits of outreach to them when we go out there, when we actually have an event coming. So any questions on any of that? So that's basically concludes my presentation. What you have on your screen there is some contact information for me, but that's not as important as the contact information about the wildfire safety program. We have a dedicated phone number there. It's 1-866-743-6589. Dedicated email address, WildfireSafety@PGE.com. If you utilize those resources, if you call that number, if you, if you send an email to that email address, they will get answered. So I encourage our customers to take advantage of that. We also have a dedicated page on our website with some more information on this, PGE.com/wildfiresafety. It has more tips on preparedness, more tips on what the program entails. We also, I should have mentioned when I talked about answer centers, we, we're hosting a series of webinars for our customers, particularly those that don't live in the high fire threat areas where they had an answer center nearby. We had one last week which had a lot of attendance and we were happy with that. Gives folks an opportunity to ask questions and hear about the program from the comfort of their own home without having to, to go out to something. So we'll be hosting more of those webinars. You guys, if you're signed up with an email address through PGE.com, you should be notified of that and invited to that. So I encourage you to join those if you have time to do so. So that basically concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Just a second. Anybody up here?
I got a question.
All right. Go ahead.
So Dylan, going back to the first part of the presentation, so, and thank you very much for coming in, by the way. It's, it was very, very informative. When you talk about the plan to replace the posts and the poles and all that stuff, is this a broad overview plan, like you guys are still developing it? Or is this a concrete plan where we know each pole that we're going to replace the undergrounding? Or are you just going to kind of, as you approach certain areas, you'll develop the plan then?
So, so that's a good question and it's a little bit of both. There are a lot of areas right now where we do have concrete plans like mapped out pole by pole with a schedule on when the pole's going to be replaced, when the overhead conductor's going to be replaced. But that, that doesn't cover all 7,100 miles of that. It would be impossible to get all that done, you know, within the, the span of a few months. So some of that is, is going to have to happen in later years. So in, in some cases there is a concrete plan to go out there and get the work scheduled and get it done. And we're getting some of the work done even as we speak, but some of the areas are going to take a little bit longer to address.
Okay, cool. And then, I'm sorry, but my libertarian streak forces me to ask this question, that the cameras, just for PGE, you guys aren't going to, you know, farm out third-party data, anything like that?
Yeah, I would encourage you to check out these cameras. They're very remote areas. They're not, you're not, you're not able to see anybody's backyard.
When you say cameras, I'm like, oh no.
I, I, I share your, your, your interest in that. You're not going to be able to see in anybody's backyard or you're not going to be able to see anything other than, than wild lands.
Mr. Restusia.
Thanks Dylan. So I'm not going to make the comments immediately the other day because I don't think they're appropriate, but I do want to tell you, you know, you're the guy with the dagger, so I do appreciate you coming out and making these presentations. It was not your fault. You're the guy that gets in front of everybody and has to take all the darts. But what I would suggest to everybody is, I set up an account a long time ago on PGE. And so I would go into that account, like Dylan says, set up an account if you don't have one, put in your current information, you'll get an immediate text and, hey, you're all set up on, on a notification. I don't know if I got an email when I set it up on both, but I had some stale data in there. So I would tell you, it's really worth doing that to make sure that you get information timely if something happens.
So I appreciate that. You know, we have, there are several ways that you can do that. If you pay your bill online, if you have a PGE MyEnergy account that you pay your bill online, you can do it really quickly in there. You can also go on the website and there's a, a link you can click to update your information. Or you can also call that number or email that email address and say, hey, I wanted to make sure you have my current information on file. Here's my cell phone number. Here's how I prefer to be contacted.
Okay.
I have two questions. The first question you said, you were a gentleman, that if this was tier one, you were very low probability of a bump to like here locally, but we're, we're higher probability than transmission. I know you've got a whole bunch of engineers that do lots of tests. What is the probability of a full transmission failure in four or five days? And I hear the five days and that seems completely wrong. So I'm trying to give a little of a negative, hopeful, personal.
So, so that's a good question and I really wish I could give you a really definitive answer to that question and say there's like X percent chance that we're going to have something like this. So much of this is so unpredictable because it, it depends on weather, which is inherently unpredictable.
Dylan, excuse me, I think, can you repeat the question? I think there's somebody in the back that couldn't hear the question. You want me to repeat?
I mean, I have a number of different reasons to cover this, but the statistical analysis of, I've been through that. And I know they don't. And I was asking you the question, what is the probability, this physical probability of a long-term failure on any transmission line throughout the state of California? So shut down the whole state. That's what's going to happen. And we're trying to get an idea of what that is. Like for the paper, five days, is that a one in a hundred or is it like, it's going to happen two times this year?
So, okay, so what I would say, the, the, the potential to have the entire state shutdown is extremely low and would take an extremely catastrophic set of circumstances. In terms of a five-day outage, again, it would be unlikely that we would have an event where transmission level customers would be affected for that length of time. I can't give you a percentage. I wish I could, could say something that definitive, but you know, a lot of this is really unpredictable. A lot of the challenge that we have is we've, I get asked a lot of times, have you guys looked at past weather patterns and done some forecasting as to, you know, how, how often this might happen? A lot of the past weather patterns that we look at are not very relevant because weather is changing so rapidly and we continue to have these, these unusual weather phenomenons like not getting our first rain until the day before Thanksgiving, like the fact that we had such a high wind driven event in early June and by the middle of June, we had already had 300 degree heat waves. You know, we, we didn't think we would have to have one of these events in June. We tended to think they would occur, as I mentioned, later on in the season, but we had unusual weather. So the, the, in terms of probabilities, it, it's, it's hard to say because so much of it's unpredictable. I would say to, to, to think that you're going to have a transmission level outage that lasts up to five days, it, it's pretty unlikely. It would require some really, a really, you know, disastrous set of circumstances to make that happen.
Next question is backup power. I have solar in my house. I'm assuming with power outage, that's going to go away. I won't be able to use that because I won't have the power on the grid.
Right. So your solar system, unless you have a battery, which most people don't for their residential solar units, your, your solar system is designed with a two-way switch so that it can feed into the grid and pull from the grid at times that it needs to do each of those to make sure that the voltage is always in a constant state coming into your house. If we shut down the grid, that two-way switch is going to open up and it's not going to work. unlikely. It would require some really, a really, you know, disastrous set of circumstances to make that happen.
Next question is backup power. I have solar in my house. I'm assuming with power outage, that's going to go away. I won't be able to use that because I won't have the power on the grid.
Right. So your solar system, unless you have a battery, which most people don't for their residential solar units, your solar system is designed with a two-way switch so that it can feed into the grid and pull from the grid at times that it needs to do each of those to make sure that the voltage is always in a constant state coming into your house. If we shut down the grid, that two-way switch is going to open up and it's not going to work. So yeah, your solar unit on your house is not going to be capable of powering your house at a time when the grid is offline, unless you have a battery, unless you have some kind of way to make that stand alone.
Then the next question is, if I go ahead and close the breaker to the grid, hook up emergency generator, power my system for the generator, say, three KV or three kilowatt generator or five kilowatt, can I then hook up my solar and have that run too at the same time? Is that acceptable by PG&E? Because hooking up generators is usually a no-no with PG&E unless I get special permission.
Okay, so, in terms of generators, so there are several ways that you can hook up a generator to your house. If you want to hook up what they call a whole-house generator, where it's going to kick on and you're going to be able to use every appliance in your house as though you're still connected to power, that requires a permit from the city. It needs to be installed by a licensed electrician. We have a place on our website. It's called pge.com backslash generator, where we talk about some of these requirements. It needs to be installed with the same two-way switch that you would have on your solar unit to make sure that your generator would not backfeed into our lines at a point where the grid is down, and also to protect your side of the house from any kind of grid malfunctions there. So that's for a whole-house generator. You can get a smaller generator and maybe put it in your backyard. Please do this outdoors, not in your garage. This is something that shouldn't need to be said, but needed to be said. So you can have a generator like that that would maybe power several of your appliances. You could use it to keep your freezer cold for the length of a couple of days. You could use it to recharge your cell phone batteries, things like that, medical needs if you have those. So that's something that you wouldn't need a permit because you're not actually going into the grid. Now, the question of if you could use your generator to power your solar unit, I really don't know. That's something I would have to try to get back to you on.
This is for the city. In the event this ever happens, how are you, are our plans going to be made to protect us from looters and burglars and things like that? Should there be nothing available but you guys for our protection? So is that in place?
I think as soon as Mr. George is finished, we have somebody that's going to address that question.
And that gives me an opportunity to say, I've had a chance to meet with a lot of your staff and discuss this, and you guys have a really good city staff here at Ripon. I know you know that, but they're really on top of the planning for this, so I want to give a little plug for that. Yes, councilman here?
What would that whole-house compressor, what would that cost?
It's not cheap. You know, the cost of the generator itself and the installation is quite significant. I don't have a number for you. It would be in the thousands of dollars. It's not cheap.
Yes, I wanted to ask a question. I want to make sure I can say it right. When you say the power grid, there's like downtown Ripon, on each side, if a power goes out, say, on the north side, the south side is still going?
Maybe, depending on where the outage is originating from. That could happen, yes.
Yeah, because I know it's happened quite a few. They used to have a business down there, and one side would be out, and the other side's still going, and then it'd be vice versa. So is that power grid coming in from different directions?
Yes, it is. There are different sources that would feed a city like Ripon. And you guys also have some of your city that is fed by MID. So, you know, you have some separate, you have a kind of a whole secondary sort of mini-grid that feeds parts of the city. So it is possible that we would have an outage event that would affect only a portion of town, and it is possible to even have something where you describe, like one side of the street has power and one side of the street does not. That's something that we see in outage events like winter storms and wind events. So if you happen to be located near a device, like a re-closer or a switch or something like that, you might be right at the point where they're able to isolate the damage, and you might still be on while somebody across the street is out of power. So it's not known if, whether an event like this would affect the entire city, or would affect, say, you know, multiple cities. A lot of that is going to depend very specifically on the weather event and the portions that are affected, and then it's going to depend on how many transmission lines might have to be affected in an event, because at that point, you get kind of this domino effect where if you have to take several transmission lines out of service, you have other lines that get to be overloaded and overtaxed, and you run into issues with capacity like that. So there's a lot of different dominos that would have to fall in order to be able to predict exactly, you know, who would be affected by any one event.
I have a question for like, the medically fragile on fixed income, what are they supposed to do? What if they can't afford a generator? PG&E is only responsible to give them a notice? Like, they can't loan them generators to at least keep their medicine contained or their CPAP machines or their oxygen machines? Basically, it's just up to them to figure out a way to basically sustain life, but what if they're on a fixed income and they can't afford to go get these things?
So there's several things that we could do for them. We would first of all work with our city, county, emergency responding partners if we knew of medical customers that were in that condition, where they were non-ambulatory, they couldn't get around, where they didn't have anywhere to go, they didn't have family or relatives that they could stay with. And, you know, we would help try to get them to a place where they were safe. One of the things that PG&E did in the shutdown event that we had in Yuba, Butte County area, is we set up what we call a community resource center. So we basically set up an area which had air conditioning and cold water and had electricity. It was a place that folks could go to recharge their devices, recharge their phones, you know, cool down, get some cold water. So it's, that's something that we would look to do in the event where we had to have a shutdown in a community like this.
I just, I see, like you said, like to cool down or charge their phones, but I don't understand, like if power's being shut off for five days and you have someone that's bedridden and on oxygen and say, needing insulin and stuff, like how is that going to help that person? And do you guys actually have this space if you have like a large amount of people? For example, we have Bethany at home, and we have a lot of elderly in our community, and it's, and there are people that aren't elderly also that would need these stations. So do you guys actually have like the manpower and the space to help everybody in event of like a five-day shutdown or something?
So I mean, if we were to have an event that were to go as long as five days, that would be a significant challenge, yes. I mean, what I would say is, we would work with all of our community partners, all of our police, fire, Office of Emergency Services, responding agencies, to try to make sure that we were able to do everything we could for the most medically vulnerable of customers. The longer an event goes, the more of a challenge that would become, and you're certainly correct in saying that.
If there's a source of power within your given tier-one service area, such as, you know, somewhere here in the valley, how is it determined who's going to access the power that's generated locally that's not part of a tier-two, tier-three risk?
Well, it's all the physical interconnectedness of the grid. I mean, one substation is connected to a distribution network or several distribution networks that it's capable of serving. So if that substation were to lose power because the transmission source into it were to have to be shut down, then those distribution networks that are physically connected to that substation would be the ones that would go down. So, you know, the decision, there's not really a decision to be made. It's all just the physical interconnectedness of the grid that would determine that.
Okay, so if there's a local source of utility, the community is close to that source would still be shut down because it couldn't be transmitted?
Yeah, again, I mean, if the substation loses its source of power, then that's when you could have that shutdown. Because the substation has to get fed by a transmission source, and if that transmission source happens to be, you know, a big line, like a 230 level line that's, you know, travels through parts of Walimie County or something like that, it could potentially be that that line would have to be taken down. It may or may not. It depends on all the specifics of the situation.
It's my understanding that if we have patients, people at home that need the electricity, as you were talking about, or Bethany, that even our hospitals in the area, as far as Manteca and Tracy, that those patients that needed the electrical care would have to be transferred out of those facilities to facilities that do have electricity. So that, and any dialysis patient would have to be sent out of the area to be taken care of, and our resources would be really thin as far as ambulances, et cetera, because all medics and fire would be used to transfer these patients. And many of them are immediate, and I can't even imagine bagging a patient all the way to Sacramento or to Modesto while they're, you know, on life support. So I think that we need to really pay more attention to our emergency problems at this time than just, it could be a problem and there's a place where you can go get some cold water.
Well, I mean, what I would say is, we've had, we've done extensive outreach to hospitals. We've had discussions with dialysis companies such as Davita to talk about, you know, making a plan for this kind of scenario. I haven't been personally involved in those conversations, so I can't speak to a lot of the specifics of the plan, but I know those conversations have been going on for quite a while now. You know, when I, just as a comment here, when we understand that in an event like this, if we were to have to shut down power, there are public safety impacts that come with having to shut down power. It's a real delicate balance to weigh the public safety impacts of wildfire danger versus the public safety impacts that occur when you have to shut down power. It's a very hard decision to make, and it's not a decision that we take lightly. You know, we have, everybody that works for PG&E, our nature is that we want to keep the lights on. That's what we're here for. That's why we came to work for PG&E. So an event where we have to go out and turn the lights off is not something that we enjoy, and it's not something we take lightly. But given the ever-increasing wildfire danger that our state faces, it's something that may be necessary at times.
Okay.
So I want to thank you guys very much for having me. Thank you for your time, and I want to thank your staff for their cooperation as we've been working through this.
And I would encourage any of you that have more questions. There are ways to access PG&E or local emergency people, and the idea is, don't wait until it happens. Start thinking about it now, and if you've got concerns or issues, look for the people that can help you work it out.
And I'll stick around if anybody asks me. I'll stick around for a while.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Then we will move on. Item 5B.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
What?
The city.
Oh.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so staff has been, over the last two weeks, kind of putting together a draft operations plan to kind of address what this lady had asked, as far as what the city is going to do, what our plans are to do for utilities, public safety, and things of that nature. So this, what I'm presenting here tonight is just a draft operations plan, something that we wanted to present, get in front of the council and the community. We have recommendations in there, not necessarily needing action on those recommendations tonight, but we do want council to consider those, and we could come back with any comments that you may have on those recommendations looking forward to this plan. So I'll kind of skip through PG&E whilst our fire safety program, then we've covered most of that. What we have been told from PG&E is, this could be for up to five days, between two and five days. So our plan, basically what it consisted of was evaluating all of our cities, all of our essential services, overview of our operations for those essential services, looking for the deficiencies, creating a public outreach bulletin, and our recommendations, and fiscal impacts for those recommendations. So I'm kind of going to just go over all the different departments of the city, and you can see what our operations are and those deficiencies. So first is our police services. The building itself, the police department, is fed by MID. I guess I should back up a little bit. Dylan did mention that the city of Ripon, we are in pretty good shape with the fact that we do have MID as an additional source. We have several of our utilities, or several of our essential utilities that are powered by MID, the city hall, and the police station being one of them. So the police department itself is fed by MID, and our conversations with MID to this point say they would have no effect as far as any power outages associated with PG&E at this time. So basically, their operations would be what you see here. They'd be addressing increased calls. I think the biggest thing to take from the police services and their operations is that there may be just a delayed response time due to the increased number of calls. I'm sure that they're going to be seeing that just higher volume as they move through this issue. This is kind of just more portions of their operations. They would also be posting updates coordinating with non-government agencies for shelter, feed, and then other delivery and supplies. Moving on, I'll just get to our water, our water system. So the city's water system is operated by a number of wells and two elevated towers, the water tanks that we have here. Both PG&E and MID serve those, depending on what they are. With the current configuration and the existing backup generators that we do have in place, if PG&E were to lose power, we would have two city wells that would be non-operational. What that would mean for us, for our water system, is that that pressure would be significantly dropped. We would need to, or would like to, put water restrictions in so that we can continue serving water. And then our operations as a staff would be adjusting our staff schedules to provide around-the-clock coverage, or monitoring and maintaining the backup generators. We'd also be constantly monitoring our city SCADA system, which is monitoring the pressures in our lines, volumes of those tanks, kind of seeing where we're at as the city consumers are using the water. So our basic needs for our water system is one large portable generator that would supply the power for one additional well. We feel if we had this in place, it would provide that redundancy in the system if PG&E's power was to be lost. But it'd also provide us kind of assurances later on down the road, if MID was to go out, we would have that as well. So moving on to our sewer system. So basically, we have our gravity pipes. We have several lift stations around the town, and then those convey, commit sewage in our pressurized pipes out to our sewer treatment facilities. So the effects of that without PG&E power would be two of our critical lift stations that would be non-operational. Basically, our operations would do the same thing, very similar with water. It's just our staff's schedules to provide around-the-clock coverage for monitoring and maintaining our backup generators, and then monitoring our SCADA system. So our system needs, is a smaller generator that we would use as staff to basically jump back and forth between those two critical lift stations. We do have some time. We have some storage in those lift stations, but we need to jump back and forth, continuing to pump those out and get that waste water out to our sewer treatment facility. Our sewer treatment facility itself is operated all by gravity. We do have aerators out there at our ponds. If we did lose power for up to five days, we would be okay. There's no critical impacts to the city sewer system. Other than that, our garbage system would be fully operational. Our garbage trucks are powered by compressed natural gas. Our fueling station, and I'll get into that here in a minute, is provided power by MID, so there's no change in service. So this is kind of the big one. If we lost that power, we have several backup generators around town that are serving either different wells or those lift stations. So having a fuel supply is huge, and then supplying that fuel out to our wells is big. So currently, our fueling station has two 10,000-gallon storage tanks for our diesel and gasoline. The majority of these generators are diesel. We have talked to our fuel supplier. They have guaranteed us 10,000 gallons of diesel fuel within 48 hours. So as soon as we get a notice from PG&E, we would be on the phone with them and trying to coordinate that and getting that fuel here. And then as far as transportation and supply, they've also indicated that they could help us fueling those generators at the different wells and lift stations. But we'd also have our own smaller trucks that would go out and be filling that constantly with staff. Our corporation yard currently is powered with PG&E. We would recommend that we purchase a smaller generator that would just get, kind of keep the lights on, keep our SCADA system on, so we can continue to monitor that. And obviously, our public works would be utilizing that to operate out of, during power shut-off. Street lights and traffic signals, so basically, none of those are going to work if they're powered by PG&E. There's no plan to back those up. So 70% of lights here are powered by PG&E, as far as street lights go, and basically, all of our signals except one are powered by PG&E as well. So our police department would kind of help out with some traffic control in those areas, and possibly put out stop signs as needed. Our city parks, so the majority of our city parks are supplied by our non-potable water system, which is a completely separate system than the potable drinking water system and the two water tanks that you see here in town. All of those wells that are currently online for our non-potable system are powered by MID, and we would just water our parks as necessary to try and avoid that complete loss of landscaping. It would just be the non-potable water that we're using for that. Our senior center, this is something that Dylan had kind of touched on, as far as having a possibly cooling station. So this is currently powered by PG&E. It doesn't have backup power. If we were able to provide a backup generator, we can continue that Meals on Wheels program, use it as a cooling center. We don't recommend really purchasing and having something on standby. I think once we've got that notification from PG&E, that something is... We don't recommend really purchasing and having something on standby. I think once we've got that notification from PG&E that something has happened, then we would look to reach out, go and obtain a generator to power that building up. Our city hall, admin building here, like I said before, this is MID without backup power. Well, this side of the building is MID without backup power. Admin, city admin, everything relocating over to the police department in the event of a complete power loss. We don't anticipate that, but that's what would happen. Our community center, it's powered by MID without backup power, so this could also be used as a cooling center with two large HVAC units. It's a large area. Rentals would continue if power was available during the week when there's no rentals. Obviously, we could use that solely for any number of things during crisis areas. These are just other buildings that we have that are powered by PG&E, Sober Hall, the Libs, and then both of the centers. Obviously, those would all be out. So public outreach, so in addition to what Dylan was showing you earlier, so we are going to, we're working toward a kind of a public outreach bulletin that's a little more a little more pertinent to Ripon and our citizens. We put it on our website at all times, and then obviously blast it out on various social media platforms. If we did get that notification, basically focusing on the public safety side, additional aid services, and then our city services. And then here's our recommendation, so kind of recommendations, covering everything that we went over for the water system, the sewer system, and those facilities. This is basically our recommendation, where we feel would provide the city with a good amount of reliability and redundancy in our systems to continue to provide water sewer services to the public, as well as backup generators at the fueling station and our corporation yard. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions?
Comment, question. First, comment is, I have three cars and the gas tanks never get below 50% to 70%. I would just recommend everybody to watch your gas tank. Never let it go down, because if power goes down, you have to build a new car with gas. So that's first recommendation. The second thing is, do we believe that there would be generators for rent if the power goes out?
Yeah, it's going to be a scramble on that, and that's kind of why we'd recommend purchasing these, having these on hand. The only one that would reach out to would be for that senior center if we...
Yeah, I wouldn't be sarcastic. I'm just wondering if we had something set up like a rental company that we get kind of like private, you know?
We've talked to them. We've got our name on a list for whatever it is.
Even though it listed it, right? All right, thanks. All right, thanks.
I would just ask, maybe it's a question for the chief. She's a further expand upon the question that the lady asked earlier. When, you know, at nighttime, the entire city's down, we don't have any streetlights, there's no alarm systems working, there's no power to anybody's houses. It certainly creates a fear that increased risk for looting and, you know, what recommendations can we give to those people? And what assurance can we give them that we're going to be able to provide them the security that they need?
Well, initially, I would say for any precautions our community members can take upon themselves, it would seem greatly beneficial to anything that we could do to support that. Talking about battery backups, talking about solar lighting, anything else that you can take upon yourself to light up your property. We always recommend to our neighborhood watch groups and so forth that when you light up a property, that deters a lot of criminal activity that goes on. So that's what I would recommend for our community members. On the other aspect, what we would do is, our activity would probably start upon that first 48-hour notice or close to it as possible with deploying additional officers. And we have a strategic plan within the department where we would have an all-call, where it would be mandatory shifts for all personnel divided up, so we'd have 24-hour coverage. The town would be divided up into either regions, divisions, grids, so we can make sure that the most vulnerable areas are patrolled on a more confined patrol patterns than we traditionally operate in. And so we would have things where, we would make sure that those officers are designed to be deployed in those areas that we anticipate and that we are currently seeing more problematic things occur, crime, freeway traffic, people coming into the community and trying to victimize. So we do have a plan to address that, and if it was more centralized to just Ripon, we also have agreements with other law enforcement agencies around that would be for the mutual aid, where we could get additional staffing into our community. Now, the power outage does affect a wide range, a portion of our county and even North-South County. That mutual aid may be very limited, but those resources are always available to us. We've also been working with, I have been in contact with the county OES and working with them on some of their items that they're going to have available with outsourced energy sources such as generators and some private companies that may have additional resources available to us. I'm a recently community operations manager for the city, so I would have said if anybody has specific questions, they can either address me at a later time or James, who wants to reach out to us for more specific questions or answers. I can do that.
Any other questions?
Why is there not a MID problem? It was a PG&E problem, or is that, am I mistaken on that?
Well, what we've been told from MID, there are two completely separate networks, MID and TID. They generate their own power, and they don't have any of the power lines. None of them are in that critical area where they have to go through this process of shutting down under certain conditions.
And then my other question, I guess, would be for Representative Dylan. Who's going to pay for all this work that the guys are going to be doing?
So, you know, there might be an opportunity to recoup costs through something like a state emergency declaration or something like that. For, in terms of the city buying resources like generators and things like that, I mean, if your question is PG&E, they can do that. I mean, I would just comment, that would be a benefit to the city for any kind of emergency preparedness, whether it's a public safety power shut-off event, or an earthquake, or another type of power outage type of event.
I can expand upon that a little bit. I'm sure there was some contract that I signed with PG&E when I got my first PG&E account, who didn't pay the $100 fee to set it up. But does PG&E have any obligation to deliver power? You're saying you can shut it off, and I understand the reasoning of why, but what is PG&E's obligation to actually deliver power?
So, I mean, the short answer to the question is no. I mean, we don't, we don't have a thing where we, you know, guarantee power 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Obviously, we do our very best, and, you know, liability has been quite good over the last several years, but we don't have, you know, some kind of covenant where we're guaranteed to give you power 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I wish, I wish we did. Wish we could do that.
You have one question? That would require a longer answer than any of us are prepared to give.
I could, I could answer part of that. Part of this exercise that staff went through, we looked at, you know, costs for renting these annually just during the fire season. We also looked at proximity to MID facilities and what those costs would look like. In most cases, where we are close to MID power, we are using MID power, and the areas that we need, areas that extend a little further than we'd like, and those costs, and what's shown there.
The other part of it is, it's a question by MID. Staff is having, I have a meeting with the general manager at MID, asking them their question. Do they have an interest to expand their services at Ripon? Obviously, they're 40%, I think you said, serving our customers, our residents of Ripon. Is there interest in MID expanding that? So we're at least going to have a conversation and see where they're at, and report out in future counseling and steering, what the response would be from MID.
Kevin, can you expand on that? Is there opportunities for overlap in areas like where, you know, with other utilities, you have communications and stuff, you can get different ones? Is there an opportunity for, say, my house has PG&E, can MID one bring a line into, supplement it into, are they able to do that?
You know, to be honest, we're just starting to get into that agreement. I don't believe so. I know back when MID was taking over a lot of the services at Ripon that they had, there was exit fees and such that were paid to PG&E, because obviously PG&E is expanding their facilities, assuming that they're going to be serving that long-term, and that's not there anymore. So I know there was exit fees. I don't believe that they could have dual, dual power sources. It's my understanding, I guess we're still beginning to talk about that. It might be a great power agreement here.
All right, all right.
We did just receive one from MID. It shows their general locations are aligned. It's not every single neighborhood, and those general lines don't show like every house. We do have that. We'd be looking to put something like that together. As soon as we do, we could put that out on our website.
Yes, there could be. That's something that we always consider, and that would be determined by the length, or potential length of the event, and what's occurring in our community. We wouldn't do it just as a blanket statement, but we would make that determination based on what's occurring.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Peace. Dylan still here? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure there will be more ongoing discussions as this moves forward. My big encouragement is, if you have questions or concerns, bring them up. Don't wait until 48 hours from now. It may be happening. It's a little bit late at that point. Thank you. All right, moving on. 5B is the issue of the sycamore trees on Jacktown. Who's handling that?
I'd be myself.
You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2007, City Ripon constructed a bike path on Jacktown between Main Street and Dope Boulevard. As part of that project, a median is installed with landscaping between the bike path and Jacktown. Is, we've planted sycamore trees along that Jacktown. At the time, the city council had desired to have the sycamore trees planted throughout the city in different projects due to their large canopies and to match the tree-lined streets that were part of town. The project turned out really nice. The trees are now matured. In the past, recent past, we've had one resident that has been complaining or had concerns about the mess that was created by the sycamore trees and has requested that they be removed. We've had the trees looked at by arborists. The trees are healthy trees. Where the mess is coming from is the trees produce, it's part of their natural process, seed pods that start in the spring and develop to the fall and then will fall off the tree, break off hundreds of little seeds, fluffy seeds that blow over. So for a two-week period between sometimes in the spring and sometimes in the fall, there is a huge amount of this debris that is fluffed, fallen on the streets. This year, it was a very unusual year. We're not sure exactly why. We had a larger amount of the debris falling from the trees. We reached out to an arborist and asked him what he felt the issue was, and he said his feeling was is that we had, in April, we had some high winds, unusually high winds, that knocked a lot of those seed pods off from the previous year. Caused an older break open in a very short period of time, and of course, that landed up into folks' yards. This year, because of the usual amount of debris, seed pods, we started having our street sweeper hit those problem areas on a daily basis instead of weekly basis. This year, we did, along with the original individual that had expressed some concerns in the past, we received two additional complaints from residents that lived on Jacktown north of Main Street, where the trees are adjacent to their backyards. And as part of that, part of that, we asked the arborist what could be done to prevent this issue. And one option that he threw out was that the city could apply a fruit eliminator product to a tree to stop those pods from being produced during the springtime. He suggested two applications, the product in early spring, and that would be at a cost of $130 per tree per year. Last month, the city had a city council meeting, a petition was given to the council requesting 35 trees between Main Street and Dope Boulevard be removed because of this issue. So the city's kind of looked at what different options can be available. The city council may want to consider a few items. To remove, one of them, of course, is one of the trees. That would be a cost of about $56,000 to remove all those trees. And it would take about eight to 10 years for replacing with a different variety of trees. If you were to do that, it would take about eight to 10 years to get something substantial back, replace those trees. And to remove the trees, would be a shame. All trees, one way or another, create some sort of mess throughout the year. These are mature trees that provide a beautiful street escape and bike path, and it would eliminate the public benefit that everyone enjoys. The other option is a recommendation that the arborist had given us to apply the fruit elimination product next spring to 70 trees, 70 trees, 35 be the petition addressed, and then 35 more that are on the north side of Main Street. As we have gotten a couple of complaints from the residents of the product of the mess going in their backyard. That would be at a cost of $9,100 for the treatment. And then the other option, other option, is to continue to monitor the issue, see if the problem persists to the same degree next year as it did this year. We feel that there is something unusual, unusually happy this year versus what's happened in the past. Always a little bit of a mess. This year was a little bit of a mess. We're hoping that was just a very unusual time, so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Just a minute, just a minute. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't know that I have any questions, real specific questions, but I guess I have a comment. I have in general. I've seen it in multiple different places. I've looked at fine houses. The city requires a tree, in this case, they're on property or even city right-of-way. Seen it in a front yard. They require, a certain type of wire that creates a mess, or in places where you, the city plants a tree, eventually... Or in places where you, the city plants a tree, eventually the roots tear up the sidewalk and that becomes a sidewalk. Problem to fix the sidewalk, so it's like I have a hard time, you know, creating a problem for homeowners. The city's putting trees and then just saying, there's public benefit to them and we're not going to do anything about it. Particularly when, on the south end of Jacktown, south of the houses that are facing it, really the ones that have to look at it. Or the people that maybe ride their bikes by, which I suppose probably are the same people. I don't know how many people actually use a bike path, I don't know if they're there, so I don't see it. I just have a hard time putting the tree and saying we're going to keep the tree when it's creating this big of a problem. If we can spray something, I mean, just doing a rough math, in five years, it's going to cost us as much to spray them and take them out and replace them with some bushes or something. I think there's better options, my recommendation would be to take the trees out and don't worry about it, because they'll back some. Makes sense. That's all I've got to say.
Go ahead, go ahead. We need you over there, name an address.
My name is Jerry Donahue, I'm 96 South Jacktown. I'm one of the affected people, I'm not like the ones that came up with the petition to begin with. I understand what you're saying, yes, it was worse this year than it has been in the past, it's been horrible every year. And it affects many different things. Number one, it absolutely flaws your gutters. You can clean your gutters 10 times in a year, and every time it rains, whatever, every time a root comes down and you're out there and you're pouring rain, and the gutters are going over, and it just creates like a paper mache ball in your gutters. It also gets into the pool. When it gets into the pool, I'm having the guy come out once a month, about 70 bucks a pop, to clean my filters because it's a solid plug, that material. My pets have had to go to the vets because the spores from that stuff gets on them, or they breathe it or something. If you go out, they sweep around it, try to get anything around you, you'll get scratchy, itchy. It's just a mess, it gets into our air conditioning unit, gets into the cars, into the intake for the cabs, for the air conditioning filters and air filters. I mean, it is a mess. You guys don't live there, so you don't know, so I'm letting you know, it is way, worse off than what, they may want to leave it. To live there and to deal with this, it's unbelievable. And I mean, we just ran our course with it, and all the neighbors that are here, St. Horton are here, because it's really miserable to live there. And we've been living there since 1994, I've been there when they put the bike path in, the whole nine yards, and it's pretty. I love it, it's a beautiful look at, but it's a horror show. When the wind's blowing from the north, you can just see sheets of this stuff going over everybody's houses and hovering cars. It's nasty, and I appreciate the fact that they ran the street reed over every other day, that gets the street. That doesn't get my front yard or my roof or my backyard, people behind your backyard, your neighbors or the gutters. I appreciate what they're doing, I understand where you guys are coming from, I'd love to keep the trees too. I'd like to keep my house in one piece and not have to spend a fortune and have all the issues that we have. I appreciate you hearing me, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else, anyone else?
My name is Joe Segura, 96 South Jacktown Road. Really, Jerry said a lot, he said that needs to be said. To be honest, I read the memo, I don't know if it was staff memo or what, whoever authored that, talking about some of the things that Mr. Johnson was going over in terms of, it's only a few weeks, there's hundreds of seeds that go out. No, it's like March today, today's July 9th, you can come to my house, look at my roof, and I still have thousands of these little seed pods on my roof. So when it's pink, you're talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of these little tiny furry things that my kids can't even go outside in my backyard. I've got four young kids at home, they like to go outside and play outside, and these things get dried up and they step on them. It hurts their feet, I'm not one to, I don't normally get involved in these city type things, but this is such a big deal that I thought it was important to come down here to help you guys understand if you don't already, the importance of getting rid of those trees. I'm not anti-tree, I'm not even anti picking up some nice trees. I'm happy to pick up the leaves that go across, every tree you put there, if it's got some leaves or something like that that are manageable, that are reasonable. I live across there, I knew the trees were there on the house, but I never anticipated the amount of just damage that would incur in the memo to say it doesn't cause a health hazard or anything like that, I think is a little disingenuous. But it does, like I said, cuts on feeds, dogs, animals, things like that, getting food. You can't leave a dog's food outside because it gets all in there, then it eats all in there, then it gets inside their intestines and things like that. So I just want to encourage you guys to please take action on it. Please remove the trees, make something that makes sense there. Council and the graph, I really appreciate your comments really and your support on this. It's really a big deal, so yes, there's a benefit to the community to have a tree. Put another tree there, put something else there, we would love your support, it's a beautiful bike path. But it's unbelievable the way it is now, to wait another year to see if we have, you know, another bad year. It's really ridiculous if you ask me. They're getting worse because the trees are getting bigger and they're going to continue to get bigger every year. So it's only going to get worse and worse and worse. And Jerry's right, it's been miserable for a lot of years, and we've just put up with it, but enough is enough. And so we're here to ask for your support and get rid of the trees. Thank you.
Anybody else, anybody else? Mr. Restuccia.
First, thanks for bringing it up, you're right, we don't live over there, we see the drive-by, we see it. I bought, I bought, it's over in Holly, in blue, you saw it, dust going everywhere. You know, you can spray them for a while, you know, because it created a problem. Concern that I've got is you're talking about animals and dogs, gets in your filter system. It's also going to reduce the roots, we were told, that was a little, all of the dust. So when I take a look at the picture, it may be the worst picture, it may be all I don't know, but it looks like an absolute mess, and I think it's always fine, I don't know what the answer, the concern I would have is if we plant anything else, and I'm not against, but what would we be able to plant, get in their place? Because we don't want to lose trees, like you said, nobody likes trees, make sure they're nice anyway and all that. But what would we put up there, it wouldn't be, yeah, but not be really messy. Really?
There are several different trees that you could put, they could put the place, they could put the place. We'd have to do some research, which is compatible for this, for the area. Certainly more compatible than the market passing the trees. There are a Chinese pistachio, Chinese next to it, would be a candidate, but we'd like to research it, figure out which tree, which best.
Well, you're saying 56, take them out and plant something else. And I know, Dan's in here, you're not a map guy, you're a good guy. I know, and you're not a map guy, I think you're pretty good, thanks, I appreciate it.
I think, I think to avoid, to avoid another mistake, that you ought to do some research as to what the options are for replacement. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about that spray, myself. I grew up in a house that had five sycamore trees, I don't remember, I don't remember. And I mean, they were planted when I was born, by the time I was 25, they were pretty darn big trees, and I don't remember what I'm seeing there, I don't, I don't. Something's going on, and if we can't fix it, then we can't fix it, then we can't move, but to sit here tonight and say you jerk them out without a plan, I'm not for that, I'm not for that. So I think we need to have you guys figure out what options there are as far as replacement, pluses and the minuses, because every tree, I don't care what it is, it's got good things and bad things. And I want to know about the bad ones, where we go put them in the ground. Perhaps somebody 10 years from now, talking about it all over again.
I agree if we're going to do it, it takes a little bit longer to do it, but I can tell you, I can tell you what's going to happen. Same thing happens to y'all, is what it does, it deforms it, it still drops, there's still something dropping, still something dropping. You deform it, it just doesn't grow to full extent, but you still have that.
Apple trees that were mentioned before, and down there in the wall, you're down there stepping all over, stepping all over little pieces of fruit about that big around, negative to these, and we need to find out what they are. And find the best solution, not the best solution.
In my opinion, I agree with Daniel, you know, spending 10, 11 thousand dollars a year is not, I just don't think that's the answer.
You don't know till you try, you don't know till you try.
That's 10, 11 thousand dollars a waste this year, it doesn't work. I guess it's.
I look at it once, it's not a waste, it's an investigation, remember, that 56,000 replaced, you have nothing. For five or six years, stick out of the ground with some leaves on top, okay? I, that's not true, I got here, that street was not even built, so let's be careful about what we say here, okay? All right, you know what we're going to do? Well, well, no, I agree, I agree, I understand, I understand. I've been here a long time, involved with the public a long time, and I've been in rooms where people have said they want something, and they got it, and then five years later, they're complaining about that. That's why I want to be careful about where we go and what we do. I can handle one night, I don't want it two years from now, because we screwed it up again, we screwed it up again. I know, I know. I was here when that was a dead end, when you came on. That's why I want an investigation, I want to see everything, I want to see everything. Yeah, I agree, we've got time, I'd rather spend the time and do it right, or try to, all right? You got it, all right? We're close to the end, we're close to the end. All right, who's handling the grand jury response?
Mr. Mayor, I am, Mr. Mayor, I am, we're here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This item is for discussion, no action, but staff direction is requested by the council. At the end of 2018, all of the San Juan County agencies, we see a survey request from San Juan County Civil Grand Jury regarding the cold case investigations. Based on that survey, they sent a follow-up questionnaire to myself, which I answered, which basically was asking the definition of a cold case within the agency, we had a rip policy on set. I responded on January 30th, this year, that request. And on May 31st of 2019, the final report by the Civil Grand Jury was distributed to all laws and courts, to all cities and counties. With recommendations, and tonight, in front of you, is a sample draft prepared by our city attorney's office in response to that, and some of the actions, based on the recommendations. So tonight, we're just asking the city council's input on that response, and direction on, if further actions required.
Anybody, anybody? I mean, I thought what you had, answered all their questions and addressed their recommendations, and I'm not.
Yes, and that's what we had. That was the response to the city attorney's office, the written directive, the written policy that we had. Our plan is open on place, the city council tonight, we would put that in that place effective tomorrow. Then we would go ahead and send, finalize a draft letter, prepared by the city attorney, has a response to that. Recommendations, recommendations.
Yeah, with that, that would come back to us, or does it?
Yes, it will come back to you next month, it will come back to you next month. Yes, next month it will come back to you, for final action, but again, tonight it's just pretend as a draft.
Anybody have any problems or questions? Then I think you're, I think you're.
Thank you.
Why am I spotting, why am I spotting? I think we're done, I think we're done. Okay, chief, for the good of the order.
I have several things, I have several, so I could present to somebody, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I have a few items, the first item I'd just like to give, on the July festivities, although there was no fireworks show officially. It was unofficially, and I just want to address that tonight. So in preparation for the Fourth of July event, we had extra staffing, on the Fourth of July. We had seven officers sign, work patrol shifts that night. Typically, when there's a city event, or excuse me, chamber, partnered with the city, at the sports park. We had, so everybody works, so typically we have 17 officers on that, 19 officers on that night, minus people that have work the next day. So with the seven officers on, we actually, up until July 4th, we only had service regarding legal fireworks for the six days prior to, on the Fourth was a different story, so out of the total, we won calls for service regarding fireworks. They're generalized, they're not legal, illegal fireworks and regular fireworks. 19 were received on July 4th, between the hours, 7:30 p.m., roughly 10:30 p.m. During those calls, officers responded, average response time to each call, for service regarding legal fireworks, about three minutes. And our staff spent, on average, five to 15 minutes per call, trying to determine where the fireworks were occurring, what activity, if the activity was illegal. We went back and looked at incidents that were reported, and I don't want this to be a negative aspect to what I'm going to be talking about, because we really encourage, our committee members, all the committee departments, when they see something illegal, suspicious. But that night, although we received a lot of calls, types of fireworks, there wasn't a lot of additional information for us to follow up on. And I printed a couple incidents, I kind of referred to people calling, they're hearing in a certain area. It doesn't provide us with great details, so the officers have spent a lot of time trying to investigate where these are occurring, whether they are legal, whether they are illegal, whether they're illegal, M80s or firecrackers, aerial fireworks. They're kind of seeing that, discharge into the air, discharge on some level, it becomes very difficult to pinpoint where these are. Some of them were saying, I could hear them, I could see them, but I'm not sure where they're coming from, others, again, kind of some generalities. I know they're going off in a certain area, but I can't. Others, again, kind of some generalities, I know they're going off in a certain area, but I can't provide any more information. So, again, again, what's the officer responding, some of the incidents where they were spinning abnormal amount of time, or amount of time, fifteen, twenty minutes, trying to investigate these. They actually ran into some community members that were in those areas, and they weren't assisting detectives, where the fireworks are coming from. Which is pretty abnormal, I mean, community members are usually pretty generous, providing information on writing location, but especially with the large parties, the officers that were arriving, working in a lot, I don't think working in a lot, I don't see. So, based on that, based on that, that night, there was only one citation issue. And that was, and we had a call for service, we had a call for service, the officers were able to stand by in the general area, observed individual lighting, fireworks. Contact him, contact him, issue a citation, remaining ignited, unignited fireworks. We also had another call on July fifth, and we're senior adults and juveniles, we're letting off illegal fireworks, and we were able to address that, issue another citation. Roughly, roughly twenty-two calls, I'm sorry, twenty-one calls, the other was self-interested on July fifth. We had two citations that were issued, two citations that were issued, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, on that, from the council members, the public, council members.
Anybody have any questions?
The fines on that citation.
We usually leave it up to the officer to determine what the best violation to cite for. Either a city minister, the city health and safety code, the officer that responded to these two calls for service, it was the same officer. He felt it was more appropriate for what he observed, to issue citation, those fines are anywhere from five hundred dollars to a year in bail. That's an extreme situation, that's why not what happened, and the minimum fines, the health and safety code is five hundred dollars.
But did anybody call, anybody call the damages?
No reports at this time, no reports at this time, but I will share with you, part of our staffing, the way that we plan, perception on a bit like that, was the lack of calls that we got prior to. And if you look at the year prior, we usually start, we usually start discharge, the fire was city discharge on the city, June twenty eighth, June twenty eighth, at noon, through July fourth, at midnight. So those are the sample times, that are usually what's occurring, and this year, although we had twenty-one calls, in that period, nineteen of them on the one night. And years prior, for that same week, for that same week, twenty eighteen, we had twelve calls, twenty seventeen, we had twelve calls, and actually, twenty sixteen, we had twenty-six. That was the first year of this, and the year before that, we had thirty-one more that we had thirty-one calls. So, the previous two years, the previous two years, very minimal, over one and a half call per day for that week. But this year it picked up a bit, except for speculating, because there was no public showing, public showing. But we did staff, but we came up with a different plan of attack, different plan of attack, for next year to address problem areas. And the I T division, the local supervisors are working on that, put officers in more problematic areas, problematic areas.
The drones, the drones.
We could, but the problem I have with that is residential property, and when we got the drones, we stayed specifically not doing that. So, that's, that's the problem I have, that's the problem I have with that.
And then, I think the firework shows, the firework shows are gonna come back next year, next year. A group of people have called me, they want to, they want to do it, so do it, we can get that going, maybe that'll help.
Yeah, we did get a few calls, we did get a few calls, it was last year, we had more calls, from twelve to twenty-one, twelve to twenty-one. We are planning on, we are planning on adjustments for next year, adjustments for next year. And again, we'll, we always rely on the qualm, we always rely on the immigration, you have ninety-nine percent, you have ninety-nine percent that do. The one unusual thing, the year prior, when we issued citations, generally most of them were not in town, this year, both of them were written residents.
Anything else? You have anything else, chief, you have anything else?
I do. You threw a break, you threw a break. You gave me an end, someone gave me an end, someone intended. Just a couple of quick announcements from items that are gonna be coming, July twenty ninth through August twenty ninth. Now, we're gonna be, we're gonna be doing a community event, it's called Community Event, it's gonna be community outreach, there's a flyer on the back, there's a flyer on the table, if you'd like to take a flyer, if you'd like to take a flyer. Have the dates, and have the dates, kind of some information on what it's about, information on what it's about, and a couple of our local churches fitting in an event, the lapel pin, the lapel pin. That's gonna be part of the event, there's gonna be some community engagement, encourage community engagement, which will, which will not only be with our adult population, but our adult population, kids in our community, kids in our community. We're planning an event for Saturday, it's gonna be pretty fun, but I don't get too many details right now, but they will culminate on August sixth, which is our national community center, it starts in six to nine. Food event, food event, come out and make sure local officers and local officers, and usually our department participates, so they'll be out there too. It's a great time for all, it's a great time for all ages, it's a free event, that's probably the biggest thing on that, probably the biggest thing on that. And then on August first, I just want to make the announcement, because the announcement will have, the city council will have a meeting before that date, will be starting to accept applications for our first K E B, our first K E B. We'll be accepting applications from August first, the forty first, with the academy starting, academy starting eighteen September, it'll run through November, it'll run through November. This is for adults in our community, adults in our age years, age years, or older, and we'll have more information, we'll have it on that, as we come on that, as we come on that. The academy classes will be on August nineteenth, on sixty eighth, except for one Saturday, we will be at our range, and that is all I have, and that is all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Johnston, Mr. Johnston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to report on the reduction of twenty-one percent, twenty-one percent, thirteen percent, with our running average, running average of twenty-four percent.
Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, just one item, one report out, the first, movie night, movie night, and the free movie, this Friday, July twelfth, and August ninth, come on out.
And the movie is?
The movie is Dumbo, the two thousand nineteen, the Dumbo, for the first one, second one, to be determined, to be determined, as soon as I find out, how long that information is.
It's the cartoon, it's the cartoon. Yep, yep. Mr. Zidobard, Mr. Zidobard. Really, really? Mr. Peace, Mr. Peace, Mr. Peace, Mr. Peace. Ms. Quillacy, Ms. Quillacy. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Casey, Mr. Casey.
From the city attorney's office.
Mr. Warner, Mr. Warner, Mr. Uker, Mr. Uker, Mr. DeGraff, he said it was two pages.
Oh, it's a nice, good night for this, since I've been on the council, since I've been on the council, every meeting, they all like me making fun of you, they all like I make fun of you, and they say thank you to the members they think are here, but I think tonight, but really, really. Signs a lot on why I do say thank you, a lot of items, a lot of items were discussed tonight, probably, probably, we don't really know about, or send a letter to us, or send a letter to us, or send some. And it's hard for us to take action, and I don't personally, but when you have, but when you have people, or thirty or forty, fifty people, thirty are showing up for an item, it makes it a lot easier for us to make the right decisions. Besides, it's stressy, one of you, and stressy, one of you, or maybe we'll go back and watch the video of this, or maybe we'll go back and watch the video of this. We really appreciate you, we really appreciate you, and others do too, and the city staff as well. City staff, it's important that you guys are engaged, that you guys are engaged, just when it's going on, it's important for us to get some feedback from you. So, the reason I, I make that light of the situation, that normally nobody here, there's normally nobody here, there's usually kind of three people, we really truly appreciate it, truly appreciate it. So, the city has a history of living up to that, and I'd say that's not just a tagline, it's not just a tagline, to attract employees, to attract tourists, to come to our city, a badge of honor that we wear, and it's something that is created because the community are engaged, the community are engaged. They care about their neighbors, they care about their neighbors, they care about the people who live next to them, their neighbors aren't just people, they live next door, they never talk next door, they never talk to, they know the people that they get to care about, and then they care about, and then they can rely on. That's something that, and that's something that makes us a community place, where we want to raise our families, we want to live, raise our children, we hope that they've come back and want to live, and all of that, and people paying attention, people knowing what's going on, and just being diligent, and engaging, and participating, and they can participate in the community. So, we appreciate you guys being, appreciate you guys being, listening to me, and listening to me, and the others, and the others. And beyond that, day to day, throughout, we'll see, from the news, we'll see, going on in other communities around us, other cities that have the control budgets, they're cutting their first responders, city deadlock, isn't the city deadlock? One person, one person doesn't show up to work, doesn't show up to work, they can't send the fire engine out, they can only send the S U V out, to provide service to the people, right? And we've done a really good job in this city, thanks to everyone, thanks to everyone, just not just council members, it's not, it's not a lot of what we do, but not a lot of what we do, but the city staff's done a great job, over the years of keeping a budget, and providing services to the city. And again, it's because the community pays attention, the community pays attention, the community knows what's going on, and something that makes this community, makes this community a great little city to live in. So with that, I would say, I would encourage each one of you, I would encourage each one of you to, who know, elected to our school board, elected to our city council, to our county offices, our state offices, our state federal offices, federal offices. It's something that's increasingly important, increasingly important, and I think, I think overall, that's something that I encourage, each and every one of you to do. Just want to, I want to say thank you again, to be, for being here, for being here tonight, on different issues, I appreciate it, I appreciate it, and just want to say thank you. That's it, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Miss Busher.
A little bit of time too, I apologize, I apologize, I apologize to everybody, first, I want to say that the chambers have a relationship in July, 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 but I've had some notes sitting on me, several things I want to say. First is, I've been on the council, I've been on the council, probably gone on twenty years, I want to thank every staff, and every council member, I've ever served with, because they have, they have, they've got ethics, they've always tried, we always tried, we honestly do, we honestly. And, which is really frustrating to me, is I take a look at this country, and we aren't trying to tell, we are in a tale, just the morals in this country, I mean, I'm just, maybe I'm just old, and I've seen too much. It kind of goes to what you were saying, this was what you were saying, you said I'm a poor man, you were coming to this, but I take a look at, you know, we increase our gas tax, four billion dollars, almost a billion dollars, almost a state of mountain, state budget, non-citizen, we're not taking care of our, we're not taking care of our. They brag about the budget, bigger every year, why I like to see it shrink. I think part of the morals of this country are being led by, by how it's not ripping, it's not ripping, you should go to Sacramento, you should go to one, five billion dollars, a trillion, a trillion, point five trillion, what do we have to show, what do we have? Bad roads, bad roads, bad, and, which is very disappointing, we've got the highest poverty rates, and so, I guess, what I encourage, what I encourage, we've got legislation being taken out of council meetings, council meetings, and God, we trust, we trust a lot of companies, council meetings. I would encourage our, I know they, I know they, they very engaged, very, you know, we talk about, we talk about sycamore trees, we talk about, where we should put our streetlights, you know, if they're bigger than red, I think we can do much more, as we can, as on a state level, on a state level, we don't fight things, we don't like, encourage things, we encourage things, because if it falls, if it rounds, if it goes down, ripping goes down. And so I just want to encourage, I just want to, we see some, we see some, we disagree with, we should show support, I don't know if it means, I don't know if it means anything better, make it a lot better, that's all I have to say, and thank you everybody here, big Dan's, Dan's, Dan's. Oh, by the way, too, oh, by the way, too, Congressman Hart, I got a Congressman Hart, I think that he sent out, he sent out, he sent out, okay. I'm sure, I'm sure. The same time I want to, the same time I want to. Okay, thanks, okay, that's all, that's all.
Come on, Jay, bye, bye, mayor. Parks.
We got nothing to report. Nothing, really.
I'll have one, I'll have one thing, and I got a letter, or an email letter, or an email from a person here in town, and I've responded, I'm waiting for more, it has to do with the alleys, and I have, and I have mentioned this to Mr. Warner. At some point, I'd like to get sort of a report on our approaches, our approaches to handling the alleys in town, as to who's responsible, who's responsible for what, sort of thing, that's the thing. The questions I've got, has to do with maintenance around this person's house, and I don't really know where it goes, I don't know where exactly, that's why I've asked for more information, but they are part of the town, I'm not sure who's responsible for what. So I'll, once I get the information, I'll let you know. And with that, and with that, we're adjourned, we're adjourned, thank you all for coming, and being patient, and staying, that too, that too.